Essential 21st century skills. There are better assessment instruments already in use by some schools in the Commonwealth and many other jurisdictions based on a mix of assessments, including student portfolios and jury student exhibitions that are set according to public standards and evidence through peer review. Testing in the Commonwealth has become a kind of policy addiction, and just like addiction treatment, we need to go cold turkey to break the habit and adopt new healthy habits. Thank you.
Thank you very much. My name is Monta Mill. I am the executive director of Fair Test in Austin and on the board of citizens who are public schools. I'm here to testify and support all the bills that end reviews or place awards over on the use of standardized tests for graduation teacher evaluation by divisions in schools and districts and to support the right of parents to offer their children out of standardized tests. While the overuse and misuse of tests is rampant in the Commonwealth as you were aware of it, with harmful consequences, assessment is an essential part of schooling. Communities deserve to know how well their schools are doing and possible management and important indicators. Standardized tests should be used very sparingly as one indicator that can develop high scores, while other sources of evidence of student learning and school quality provide a robust comprehensive picture of what they deserve. An example regarding high school graduation is the New York Performance Standards Consortium of 48 public high schools in New York. These schools have a waiver from all of 1 in the 5 state graduation exams. Consortium students graduate by completing their project-based task force and four expanded performance-based assessment tasks in language arts, math, history, and science. All schools use the same teaching-driven scoring methods. Students create their tasks in consultation with their teachers. They orally defend each task before a committee that includes at least one outside expert. The result is far greater than determining more serious work than either MTEST or PAR requires according to the [inaudible]. To learn to prepare students for college success, it's 46 New York City high schools demographic in the area of the city. Consortium schools graduating a higher percentage of students. Of these graduates, a higher percentage entered college of the entrance, a higher percentage than the national average remaining college in third semester and beyond. Outcomes are English language learners, students with disabilities, African communities, and looking healthy, dramatically higher than the city average. This great success is but one possible route. It and other examples from around the country show that greater equality and equality can be obtained by shifting from relying on standardized tests to alternatives. New Hampshire is already beginning this process, under a waiver from the U.S. Department of Education, which Massachusetts will get with the end issue of the financial threats we are facing. California has implemented a comprehensive accountability system that includes a wide range of important factors about schooling with standardized test grade management. I've attached materials that provide more details on the consortium and other alternatives in my written testing module in the committee. It is time for Massachusetts to implement a locally-based, state-verified, comprehensive assessment system, and this legislature should take the lead. Thank you.
I am Jack Schneider. Assistant Assistant Education of College of the House, American Strategic, American Strategic, and all other teachers. I'm here to support the bills opposing the use of past days tests. I'm here to ensure I'm here to support the bills that oppose the use of past days tests for graduation of fellow veterans as well. The first thing that I want to do is echo what was made earlier that should be made repeated today, and that is that the chief predicted that student standardized tests towards a family income and not part of having this current educational intent. So if you are going to hold schools accountable for that, you are holding schools accountable for something that they are not in control of. And those who claim that testing is a civil right, they have to point to exceptions. Those exceptional schools in some places are exceptional, and in many cases, you'll use scores of students through attrition, through policy to drop these students out, or attract a different type of clientele, or engage in practice that we've also heard about today, which is teaching the tests in their own curriculum. I invite all of you to go to some of Massachusetts' highest-scoring schools on the MCATs that have traditionally low-scoring populations and note the breadth of the curriculum there and talk to some of the students, not only about their own experiences, but also about the experiences of students who left those schools. Something else that I would like to talk about in regard to the consequences of past days testing is the effect that it has on the diversity of our public schools. If you want to talk about civil rights, let's talk about the fact that schools are constantly stigmatized by the way that we view schools accountable, and then as a result, wealthy source of parents who are probably conscious do everything they can to get their kids out of schools that they often mistakenly believe to be bad schools because of the narrow measures that fail to capture the true quality of the school and that are often punishing those schools for clientele dissonance. Those who supported excuses, those who opposed the bills today have often talked about the need to continue testing primarily as a civil right, where they presented us with a number of false choices, like we have to choose between standards or losing standards ultimately. You can still have standards without having high-stakes testing. You can pursue civil rights without punishing communities that happen to be poor or have large percentages of minority or speaking people in those communities. What is the alternative? There are lots of alternatives. We're pursuing one of them, and some are over there. So my research team, the past year and a half, has designed a new, truly comprehensive assessment system where we began by asking community members and all state leaders, teachers, administrators, parents, non-parents, what they value. We figured out how to measure those things, and then we spent the last school year measuring, measuring variables that do not correlate strongly with family income, family education to them, that actually tell me more about how schools do. And we worked to present that data in a way that will not scare the Jesus out of people about schools that happen to have diverse student bodies. This is what we should spend the next three years working on. Thank you.
Chair Ice and other members of the Education Committee, I am Tom Rosnell, President of the American Federation of Educators in Massachusetts, and thank you for the opportunity to speak before you. The AFT Massachusetts supports H497 and other bills regarding testing. AFT Massachusetts supports reasonable assessments that are used to guide educators to address more effectively their student progress towards educational goals. We oppose excessive testing of students that leads to lost earning time, and we oppose what testing is sometimes used for. Sometimes it chooses to deny students diplomas. Sometimes it chooses to justify state creation of charter schools that cite and pressure precious resources from local district schools, and sometimes it chooses to place schools and school districts in risked areas together. Now, testing has always existed. Today, however, our members report so many tests are prescribed, students are losing valuable learning time, and the curriculum is narrow. Art, music, physical education, areas of social science are hard to find in many schools. You are not going to find many schools teaching civics or geography anymore. Parents and educators understand what's at stake. Students are learning, losing opportunities to learn. Last November, the law reported teachers statewide complained that life ahead matches demands for facts and little else, preparation for the dizzing or dizzying array of standardized tests can easily consume our mind. Even Arnie Duncan has said, "Testing is sucking the oxygen out of the room in a lot of students." In our view, it's time to reduce the many years of prescribed testing and reevaluate the need for high-stakes testing. We do oppose high-stakes testing. In 2015, we have the newest system of high-stakes testing in Massachusetts, PAR. PAR has raised serious concerns in the AFT Mass membership around transparency, cost, and utilization of results. Because of these concerns, the delegates to our state convention cast a resolution opposing PAR's implementation and reiterated our long-held position in opposition to high-stakes testing. In conclusion, given this history, how should the Commonwealth's policy on testing change? First, end high-stakes testing. Two, PAR should not be implemented. Three, alternative assessments should be created. Four, the number of state-identified tests should be reduced so teachers can dedicate more time to classroom learning. Thank you very much, representatives of Massachusetts. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Representatives of the Committee. My name is Juan Adaloni, and I am president of the 110,000 member Massachusetts Teachers Association, a member of the Massachusetts Education Justice Alliance, and a former English teacher and teacher educator. I'm here to speak to House Bill 497, House Bill 3395, and House Bill 340, as well as all of the bills which speak to ending the high-stakes testing of adults. Over the past year, I spoke with more than 1,000 MTA members at 37 forums across the state. At every single forum, the focus on high-stakes testing was a major concern. Let me be clear. Teachers are not against assessing our students' learning world. We do that all the time, that's what teaching is. We are against using our students' accomplishments on our s- we are against inducing our students' accomplishments to their scores on a standardized test. Our students are more than a score, much more. We have, over the last 15 years, been inundated with the narrowest notions of what teaching really looked like. We have allowed ourselves to be persuaded by rhetoric that silences teachers, students, and parents, rhetoric that denies the reality of students' lives, of what it means to be homeless, to live a life of economic frailty, and a role still marked by racism. We have allowed ourselves to blame teachers for these injustices instead of holding ourselves accountable for the well-being of our communities. And we have denied the root causes of poor student outcomes. Students living in poverty, students who learned differently, students needing more time to become fluent in English. In denying these, we have failed to provide our students and communities with what they really need: economic security, rich, varied, and culturally responsive curriculum, time for students to learn and engage in the world. Today, you're hearing about and will continue to hear about the ways testing and test prep have become the focus of teaching and learning, narrowing the curriculum, and undermining pedagogy of joy, hope, creativity, and imagination. You are hearing how the beauty of the nature of high-stakes testing creates an atmosphere of distrust, of fear, and stress for students, for teachers, for administrators. About a focus on testing keeps educators from knowing and teaching to the whole child and to broad purposes of education and democracy. It's the high stakes nature of this that is causing these problems. The speakers here represent the voices of students, parents, and educators not only from Massachusetts but from across the nation, where a movement is going to reclaim our public schools. The movement asserts that our public schools must be meaningful, creative, and joyful places of learning, are not institutions, but accountability and compliance based on misguided testing regimes. Please listen. Let's put a stop to the madness, and let's engage in a conversation long overdue. What do we want for every student in Massachusetts? What do we want our students to experience every day in school? And how can we best know that all schools are getting the education we deserve? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there any questions for any members now from the committee? Senator, would you have? I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Any other questions? Thank you for your testimony. I'm just going to read off the next few names so people are prepared with their names as well. So the next person will be Keith Mahoney, called Stephen Grimes. Um, Stephen Grimes will recur, and then this will be, sorry, I can't do one last comment. So if you would all be prepared.
Chairman, Chairman Ice, Chairman of the Committee. My name is Keith Mahoney. I'm here on behalf of the recent top coalition to express our position to House Bill 497 and House Bill 340. The recent top coalition is moving more than 25 civic businesses and grassroots organizations, and was formed in 2009, supported legislation, and ultimately became the Achievement Gap Act. That legislation helps churches secure $215 million in federal funds for and provide tools and resources to transform unaccompanied schools. Crucial to the success of that legislation is the ability to assess performance and direct resources and attention where they can make the most impact. This committee is familiar with making success stories that followed the Achievement Gap Act. Of the original 34 turnaround schools, 70% of students' performance efficiency are higher by 15 percentage points or more, 45% in all grades by 3 or more percentage points, and 22, 23% of students' grade efficiency are higher than math. Now, this improvement is indeed measured by MCAT results, which, if opposed, legislation would be unavailable for the next three years. If we are serious about improving schools and opposing the Tune Gap, how do we expect students to act with data with which to base our starting form and plan our end goals? The education reform Congress produced significant changes in Massachusetts, including rigorous standards and assessments, predictable and increased funding for school districts, accountable removal of performance and innovation in school governance structures. Massachusetts should now lead the nation on common assessments. And more importantly, having common assessments in place across school districts provides valuable information about instruction. This is crucial information for policy makers and school-based staff that can drive resource decisions. I would also note that the ultimate measure of student learning is not captured in a test, but rather a collateral deposition to succeed in their post-secondary pursuits. But testing data offers informative information on Commonwealth schools, obtaining students' ready for the challenges they will face in quality career. I am unclear why this issue can't be studied without a moratorium in the next three years. The legislature does many important studies, such as the Chapter 7 study that's ongoing, without suspending practice. In closing, at a time when two-year children are still falling on and are being unprepared and solutions that are working in closing the Achievement Gap are in place, why would we abandon the tool that provides information to assess that somebody else's extension?
Well, thank you. I've heard a few folks that testified today said there's a potential loss of federal funds, $240 million. I've heard it was like, it's possible, it's dangerous, maybe. Why don't we help their rules or not? We stop the testing, we reduce it, or don't?
I lose my best expertise on this, but some of the conditions on that of relying on labor from federal standards, and the labor is not, as I was saying, a contract that we have to break or we can fill, that we can justify the Department of Education whether that we're able to fulfill by a scale.
So I guess the other side of the coin would be that if it's moratorium, we take it back for three years, potentially we may still be able to keep that coming up.
That is a potential. Again, I have my expertise on that. I believe that Secretary of Defense spoke about that this morning. It is obviously a lot of coordination. So it is something that not only federal funding, but some of the title one funding we currently get that goes to district schools could be devoted to school choice, which are, which happens in other states that do not have the assessment standards that we have.
Okay. I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but you mentioned in your remarks that you had some credit.
It is a, it's a very real, real fear that I don't think you can fully assess until it becomes a decision point for the Department of Education.
Thank you. That was good.
I do not see anyone responding to that name, so we will move to the next person, who will still be in the [inaudible].
Thank you very much for your service and for being willing to tackle these very complicated and important issues. I'm here today to express my opposition to the graduation requirements for MCATs, so House Bill 497, 453, 322, 418, and seven bills, 348, 311, and 257. I'm a seven-year member of the Westboro School Committee. I have two sons, one in eighth grade specifically developing, and a sophomore who has autism. I came to testify before you. Two years ago, when we were really getting into these kinds of bills, and then I was concerned that my experience this year with my son going through MCATs, it only reinforced my belief that passing MCATs should not be a requirement for graduation. Sam, like many children, autism has splinter skills. He excels in many ways, and he also has difficulties. And he particularly has difficulty expressing what he knows. There is so much more going on inside of my son than people watching him that they are able to express. So I want to say too that certainly some assessments are good, and the people with disabilities should be held to standards. We want to make sure that they are being challenged, but I think the pendulum has just swung too far, and particularly requiring one test passage in order to receive a diploma, which will determine for the rest of your life if you're able to get a job, just does not make sense. So I have, now, also showing some data that shows that the people who don't have MCATs are people with disabilities and English language learners. So I have three points. It's not efficient because of time for students, it has a negative effect on their self-esteem, and it's an inadequate measure of their ability. Sam has so much more that he needs to learn rather than learning how to take a test. This year, he spent eight days in MCAT testing, remounting English to science. So some kids, most kids, just take two periods to do those tests, but with disability, it takes them longer. So he misses the entire day of learning, so then he's just damaged further back. Regarding his self-esteem, 40% of students with disabilities, and approximately the same amount, don't pass the first time. So then, yeah, it gets easier the second time. So like Professor Cooper, I think, is pointing out, it's also possible, if you're just making it easier and easier to pass, the more time you take it, what's the point? And what that does, I think, is it hurts kids' self-esteem. It shows, okay, I'm done, I didn't pass the first time, I'm done. So I think you all are in such a wonderful position, and you have the power to really influence a huge, the future of a huge number of kids, and I just really urge you to do that.
Thank you for your testimony. This is an issue that I've turned out to be a challenge to face, is determining what matters to us on this issue. One of the obstacles that comes up is that the reality of home is students are, there's no alternative path to high school enrollment, which I think is worthy of further consideration. It may be that, or it is, that once you have that, it's a diploma, it serves as an end. And so I suppose with students similarly situated who are old, that they have a concern about what happened in 2008, the education services. So these questions sometimes come more complicated as a moment. But I very much appreciate your testimony, and specifically the other bills that yield this issue. This is a term that is shared among people. I guess someone frustrated with the [inaudible] really thought of the solution to that. Thank you very much. There any other? So I feel compelled, as both the parent and child have autism, and the former chair of the State Autism Commission to Congress as well. I think what we need to go policy-wise is to consider a couple of alternatives and offer some possibility, depending on who that child is. So some kids are definitely never pass a M and science means, and yet they have incredibly strong English, those English language artists capabilities, writing, visual arts, whatever it may be, should not, I believe, whether you have that going forward into either a career or higher ed and focusing again on strengths rather than things that we know they're never going to be able to pass or to do. Some of this is going to have to come over the education committee, education level, and higher ed level as well, in terms of figuring out a handoff for those who, there is a possibility that this may not be a traditional approach. So I really encourage, and conversely, we can now post that we know small and high science, we have really powerful communication centers communicating, unleashing what's in that high school. I have one of those down science, [inaudible] people who talk closely. But we're going to need to figure out policy-wise, what we're going to do with this level, take 12, and then the handoff to higher ed. And there are some positive things happening in the higher level, we can talk about often, to allow for people to have, like, long learning, and again, to play their strengths so that they can be connected with meaningful work that matches their sometimes incredible skillset, graduating health, against what higher ed, their real challenges. And so I do think that the process of so many people who set this whole 10,000 high-stakes thing continues to come back to our English language learners and our special education students, and those are the people that need to extend more time and have more specialization, I believe, rather than the standard of education to be very often in the [inaudible].
Thank you. To respond, so I will leave you with sheets from the DEFE with the data showing typically developing students, how they have special ed, and I'd be glad to [inaudible]. And then to your point about diplomas, even if you pass MCATs or eligible for your diploma, a student can still refuse to take their diploma if they need something like pre-vocational help. So the schools can still give the pre-vocational help to get them started, but then when they apply for the job, they are able to check that back, and yeah, they have a diploma, which is a great [inaudible].
Next person's time, I'll just see who first. Was the first one to the last one? It looks like [inaudible]. We have that [inaudible]. [inaudible].
Chairman Ice, Chairman of the Committee. My name is Dan Kerr, and I'm here to talk about high states. I served with AmeriCorps in 2006, working at a nursing program for adults in a state that did not have the type of accountability system we are discussing here today. As we consider taking our imperfect system back to a free accountability era to pretend to the bill on MCATs and graduation programs, I urge you to visit the adult community. I want you to have the same conversations that I had with adults as a tutor. I want you to see the exasperation of a high school graduate. He wants to enter the American military but cannot read the instructions to be examined and used to test. That is not rare, by the way. A 2010 study showed that 1 in 5 high school graduates cannot pass the armed forces qualification test. Massachusetts were slightly better than the National Guard, which is slightly better. I want you to sit next to someone who went through 11 years of public [inaudible]. I want you to sit next to someone who went through eleven years of public education, public school, but struggles to get through a sentence in the big book they want to read about at an age. I want to ask these adults, and any of whom were given a diploma, about what they did for five and a half hours a day for 108 days a year, or 10, 11, or 12, or 13 years of their life. Ask how frustrating it was getting past from grade to grade without mastering the last word. We lied to them. Twenty-two years old, it's very hard to say. We cheated them. I can tell you more, but I can go over yourself, and I owe you a speaker yourself, and have those conversations. We heard, far better than I just said it now, we heard a Boston Public Schools teacher say it earlier today, that before ENCAP, there were graduating students who were functionally illiterate. Say Boston Public Schools teacher, AP teacher, talking about that era that we're considering going back to. I also want to leave one other inspiring leader. This past January, the United States Senator Elizabeth Warren, during a similar discussion in Washington, DC. Federal government provides billions of dollars every year to the states to support public education. It's a lot of money. So I think we should start with accountability. The accountability of the states that take this money. If the states are going to give federal tax dollars to improve public education systems, then we need to make sure that those tax dollars are not being wasted. But they're actually being used to improve education. One of the reasons Republicans and Democrats came together to pass No Child Left On was because the federal government had gotten really good at shoveling tax dollars out the door, but not very good at improving student achievement. Lucky for you, Massachusetts, and oh, that hasn't changed.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the committee. My name is John Griffin. I am a art college senior and a proud graduate of Waltham High School. From 2010 until 2012, I served on the Self-These, which was the most committed advisory committee to the Board of Education overseeing implementation of the 2010 education reform bill. The bill is considered today to betray the progress made for equity and excellence since that bill was passed in 2010. Since then, we have been able to identify and improve struggling schools and districts, directly increasing opportunities for the Commonwealth's most underserved students. Through testing and the use of the five-hour ranking and terror system, which are jeopardized by House Bill 340 and Senate Bill 270, 294 respectively, we have seen tantamount to results in schools across Massachusetts. Results that translate to a more equal society and to better lives for our students. We talked about Lawrence earlier today. When Massachusetts took over the role of schools in 2012, we had contentious debates in student advisory committees. Some representatives were wary about the effectiveness of standardized tests as measures of student learning, and others worried that a bloodline of the state control would only hurt Lawrence, which is already Massachusetts' highest-need district. But three years later, we can see that these worries were largely unaccounted for, and that the state made the right decision. Since the replacement of the receivership, Lawrence has seen an increase of over eighty percent in its graduation rate. It has also guarded better protection, college acceptance, and morale. Successful turnarounds have also taken place in individual schools in San Juan and Boston. Now, we are taking steps to get hold of young students educationally mature. But in order to achieve outcomes like these in cities across the Commonwealth, we need data from standardized testing, and we need the flexibility that turnaround status provides. But it isn't just suburban districts that benefit from standardized testing. In 2010, my suburban experience was able to remove itself from the new line of association of schools and colleges' warning status by improving deficient academic areas identified through increased assessment. The bills under consideration today will remade of all the progress that we've made. Senate Bill 24 will remember possible kind of turnaround that we've seen in Lawrence. House Bill 34 will leave us with no data, making it impossible to identify and help struggling students and districts. Whether we stop collecting data indefinitely or for three years alone, we will fail students who couldn't receive the better education. We will also fail teachers who will be less able to identify their strengths and weaknesses to better serve the students. And we will fail districts who would benefit from greater resources or given from receivership. These bills will lose the spirit of progress and quality, and will give us the next decade free, and again, 2010. Testing gives us the knowledge we need to make progress. Reactionary measures of these ones will only bring ignorance to students backward. We've made a lot of progress, discoveries still exist, and we need data to solve them. We cannot go back now. Thank you.
Madam Chair and members of the committee, my name is Shakira Gregory. And I'm a graduate student at East Bay University. And here today to share my story and talk about why we need some form of testing to make sure that students, teachers, and schools are leading their education goals. My testimony is in opposition to H497 and actively using ENCAP as an issue of priority and act of well-intentioned authority by state testing. Well, by the way, I've lived in the home community with this. I've seen the effects that poverty can have on a community. And I've seen how hard it is to overcome those effects. I know firsthand just how hard it is because I'm currently trying to do it myself. My family immigrated to this country a few years before I was born. I grew up with an extended family, including several cousins. And from an early age, I could see that while I loved going to school, some of my cousins didn't feel the same way. Year after year, we went from grade to grade and school to school together at home. However, while I worked hard toward the goal of going to college, I saw some of my cousins get further and further away from finishing high school. And like many of her teachers, I don't know exactly where our paths will differ between me and my cousins starting to happen. But what I do know is that this fall, I will be entering my senior year at East Bay University, and two of my cousins are currently depressed grades. I've watched the school to prison, but I find claim members of my family. And I'm speaking to you today to make sure that Massachusetts does not make an ass of it. We need accountability in this place. I can only imagine where my cousins would be today if someone had caught them and intervened with them. Instead, their challenges were unaddressed and ignored until this year. You can't just take someone in the tenth grade who's reading at fifth grade level and make up for years of instruction. It would be expensive, time-consuming, and difficult. You can, however, take a fourth grader reading at third grade level and help catch them off. To do that now, we need to catch the problem early before it gets worse. It's cheaper, simpler, and easier, if you're wrong, to do some version of testing. And I'm not the only one that hates this. Many civil rights groups have come out to support accountability because they've seen what I've seen, and they personally live my story as well. It's no coincidence that major national civil rights groups like the National Council on the Raza, the National Urban League, and the National Disability Rights Network are all working together to support accountability and annual testing. They know it's at stake, and they don't want stress to block. They just want a reasonable, objective way to make sure that our kids are learning. And I hope that my story can provide at least one example of why we test and what that serves. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Mr. Griffin is curious. He wants to direct the statistics or the source of Lawrence and San Juan being a success in the turnaround. Just want to hear the case more quickly.
Yeah, of course. All of these statistics are available on the Department of Education website. Very easy to find.
And you mentioned Lawrence and San Juan. Sorry, you were referring to...
Uh, also, Boston Public Public. Thank you.
Okay, so since you mentioned Lawrence, I'm sort of compelled to say that perhaps you were or you went here earlier than the secretary was giving out the testing. I think it's a question of degree, and where do you draw the line on accountability? What does accountability look like? And for me, I don't think it's an ad hoc proposition. I don't think it's going back to the battle days of graduating in the literature. Nobody wants that. But is it worth it for a young child in Lawrence to have to undergo eighteen to twenty days personal year of testing? This isn't even counting the threat, okay? This is testing, okay? They're doing not testing, other tests, and people want to say it's AI or something, AI that or something, as well as ENCAP. So I don't think anyone is saying, is questioning that there's a need for accountability. The question is, to what degree? And to what degree are we going to allow teachers to impeach? I don't think anybody would disagree that we need to measure data. I think all teachers understand that that's part of their job. But to what degree do we need to do that, correct? And what consequences? So, you know, I think that's, I feel compelled to say that that's, at least for me, that's where the question lies. I don't think anyone's looking to be a train to that created. I'd love to see a whole lot of schools succeeding. But to what degree are we going to be testing people? And what does that lock out in the process in the ways of creating learning, being a critical thinker, being able to elaborate, reading, all those other things that might get lost in the process of time, so desperately constant tests? That's, I just feel compelled to say that because there are wonderful things happening in Lawrence. They have the highest level, you know, very long time graduated, you know, probably announced wonderful. But there are other things, the whole surface that we're still, we look at and we're on page. Again, not in all, nothing in all, it's just, you know, I'm trying.
I hear this one, I'm sorry. But I think that we agree in that nobody wants there to be a constant stream of testing, but also there to be an often repeated testing at all. Because as you said, we need some sort of assessment, some sort of data. And I think it's important to keep in mind that the legislation that was just, I guess, there would be a complete authority on the assessments that are used to collect the data that we raised in 2010 and up until now to make future improvements that we've seen in your district in Lawrence. And I think that all, I agree that there is an improvement to be made. We can't make those improvements unless we are implementing the progress that we're making. And to say that we need to make improvements is not something to say that we should do as well. Thank you.
Any questions? The next person to sign up is a chair of the Global Club.
She went in there.
And I'm Howard, I'm interested in that. And after I'm Howard, we go Lisa Wilson. Do you have a hand or not?
She's getting her glasses. I could go up and get your glasses. I have glasses. Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the committee. Thank you so much for this opportunity to talk about these important issues. My name is Lisa Gaisbahn, and I support all of those that place the moratorium on using standardized tests for graduation, teacher evaluation, or interventions in schools and districts, and those that strengthen parents' rights to opt their children out of tests. As Executive Director of Citizens for Public Schools, I speak to many groups of parents, teachers, and students. I always begin by asking the same question. What is school for? And what do you want your children to get out of school? And people consistently say things like they hope to learn how to get along with other different kinds of people, be exposed to science, art, music, and literature, and learn how to think critically about the issues that face our communities. And all the many times I've spoken to people across the Commonwealth, no one has ever answered that question by saying that they send their children to school so they can be prepared to take standardized tests and now can be... But as we've heard today, that's for too many children, that's what school has become. That's why our less testing, more learning petition has been signed by more than 5,000 Massachusetts residents and hundreds more have been signing each day in the past several weeks. My written testimony includes representative samples of comments by parents, teachers, and students who signed the petition. And we also have testimony in favor of the moratorium from a former Board of Education member, Ruth Hassel. We've already heard from former members in the derma today. We have testimony in favor of the moratorium from current member, Marion Stewart. And we heard from the student member of the board. So I'm just going to cut my comments short because I want to hear from all the other people who were here today, but thank you so much.
I'm going to be short as well. I'll just cut to the chase. As an educator, I'm ashamed. I'm ashamed that future generations will look at our current education in Massachusetts, look at our policies, and call them as damaging and shocking and inappropriate. There are many, many policies that are foreign in current public schools. I taught for thirty-two years. I've seen them all. For example, Commonwealth of Massachusetts should be called out for their practices such as schools that allow classroom data walls where student results are posted. That's, I mean, all parents, most of you are parents. It's a terrible thing to do to children. We're doing that in Massachusetts. It's wrong. For example, the out-of-control testing regime rots every student in a state of unhealthy education, abhorrent education. Rather than teaching students that it's all about the scores, it crushes the ability of educators to teach because of the high stakes focus, which includes all those many, many practice tests. So much so that it, we're all going to talk of this. And I just have to say that it was probably twelve years ago. I had a student who was like the best student in the class. And she didn't come to school today, and her mother brought her along eventually. And my mom said to me, the reason she's not coming today is everything is about testing now. And I was pretty controlled with what we did, and it was twelve years ago. And that's what that kid is doing now. So we're, you know, we're damaging our kids. It's wrong, wrong. And we need these three years to figure it out.
Any questions for members of the committee? I see none. Next person, Cynthia. Sorry, Turcillo, sitting in front, maybe lost her. Cynthia here?
She's here. She's...
Is there a Mr. Marasiano from government?
Yes, sir. That's you, boy. Thank you very much for listening. Back in 1980, I graduated from school in Massachusetts, Wisconsin High School. When we never had the entrance. And I was a problem, but I joined the military and have a camp of military police. The challenges happened after that, then again, and then retired in 2000. Well, I remember when I first joined the military, they used to train. We actually had a soldier in military police school that could not read. So he got through the system somehow. And that's one of the reasons for why we went House 4197, a huge school for that testing. None of the high stakes tests that still are due there. For 2008, it probably happened in the military again. And they actually sent me to try out our testing unit to come and improve. And I was improving in the business. And down there, they don't have the problem, not that people have the problem in Massachusetts, that could not pass the ASD test, the honor services, or case for that to get. And there was one, one of the groups I was taking these years. And we had one student, John George, and she was from Massachusetts. And I mentioned they all run this test, and it was not so good. They had a group that used to go, she's from Massachusetts, she's going to pass no problem. So that told me at that time, that gas is going to run out in years. Not that it's a test, but at least we know when they graduate, they're going to be able to survive in the world. So I don't want the high stakes testing that still must have a test. When you leave, you've got to be able to read. You've got to be able to write. You have to be able to do math, and you've got to be able to use a computer. And you've got to be able to search. Because if you can do those, the whole world is yours. Because with the technology, with the computer, and I think that's what the law says. But this Commonwealth, the part testing, being the intelligence skills, is taught again. They have specialized boards in there, they have the assignment that must go along. It's not, it's not the average. It's all money. So I'd like you really look at it the best you can, get the politics out of it. Listen to what the people have to say. You know, if a country's not educated, we can't protect ourselves. They'll have to go to hospital, like one of the other countries, as we see. They don't want to be educated. They're not educated, a lot of people are taught that control. So let's keep this country safe and educate us, our children, so that the whole world can get it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions, Mr. Marasiano? Thank you, man. Thank you very much. Next, to Priscilla.
I see that you are signed up right after we hear the final vote. I see I am. And after that, we have Kylie Abner. Her name is Amy Swor.
Good afternoon. My name is Swor. I'm a resident of Massachusetts. I'm a member of S and D U of 509. And my call to 509 is a member of the Massachusetts Educational Justice Alliance. And I'd like to thank the committee around to me to speak with you today in the area of health, health, and safety. I would like to speak to you today as a citizen, as a migrant, and a publicist for a living. I've been a social worker in the family of children and families for the past 26 years. And I'm an individual sincerely concerned in the need to be existence and excellence of a free public school system. We all know that each child that you meet, all have different skills and abilities and challenges. All do not grow up in the same environments. Many are exposed to domestic violence, physical and sexual abuse, substance abuse, intellectual and mental health problems. Many are homeless and many are living in poverty. These and other environmental factors can lead to a bad children's story, including their little children. A child not focused in school and learning is a child's story of quite a difficult development, having their name. All children, particularly children in these circumstances, need to support and support their teachers in order to maintain getting out of school. It's obvious to me that children cannot get this type of support and attention from a teacher who is required instead to attend a testing, these more particular testing programs. An educator who I have known, trusted, and respected for many years has demonstrated two things to be an educator. She truly loves parents, loves to share with all children. She wants them all to be happy and successful. She has told me over the years that struggles of children come from unstable, destructive homes. She has told me that nutrition, sleep, and care for children helps heavily determine a child's success in school. She has told me to understand who's affected children who are in the middle of the struggle from that test. She has told me that children need an initial experience at school. She has told me that teachers should be happy and happy with children, helping them choose their reasoning and thinking. She tells me that children cannot have this necessary experience at school, that teachers are required instead to attend a testing, these particular testing programs. I and my colleagues have seen or been involved in situations where an infant is tested and graduation and finding are handed to the affected children. There are many children affected by dyslexia systems that you know all have been wronged at attending school several times throughout their school years. One child currently living in residential pre-conformant has been in nine different schools during the past few years. She's back in the school to graduate this year. Now she is going to talk about this herself. The two school districts physically responsible for the child, uh, dispute as to whether the child is completely in doubt. These two school systems are probably the issue that she wants to deal with. So I just want to say this is also a work that I'm handing over to. Since now for my personal opinion, the most appropriate way is the necessary essential opportunity to reassess your choice and trust in your community, and to accomplish the goal of a special community. Thank you.
First topic is that amazing endurance that one did. What's your big clap, Paul?
I'm an senior teacher advisor. I am a professor of early childhood education in Berkeley College and at the University. I'm also a member of S and D U, the C and D, the two families by Golden. And I'm also the early childhood director in Massachusetts Department of Educations. I really appreciate those teacher and teacher and teachers. And I've seen the impact that tested, not just general testing, but testing on has on children's and it has on teachers. It's not, I wrote this in years. One of the things that I find very frustrating as teachers and educators who are ready to deny the children to not do the financial or the elementary school or whatever, and some of the students are not going to go to the teacher's school, they are so afraid of using pretty tight ones, of doing what they know is developmentally appropriate for their students. To look at this as individuals, because they are afraid that they won't get what they have to get or the freedom to do today job, which is a very disappointing thing of looking for such a terrible way to teach it. Early childhood education kind of lowers the scale in terms of education. And our teachers are in health, and that's unfortunate. Because luckily, they're not in that house in preschool or kindergarten. But there is that test prep that is starting with our teachers in first grade and secondary. And it's determining the sales, it's determining the imagination. You know, I've been listening a lot today about the early childhood assessment. And as a teacher, my one question is who are we accountable to? Are we accountable to politics? Are we accountable to nothing? Or are we accountable to each and every child in our classroom? The generic account, though, leading to all these teachers, not so much how we get everything at the same point, but how we can, you know, all to succeed, have been amazing, and to be inspired, to have lifelong value. And one of the things with standardized tests cannot be that great, ten jobs. About the fact that the skills that we're testing now, intended, those are kind of the ones that are changing the industry. You know, if you're looking at, every career, however, have the technology, authority, device, students sometimes, but that wasn't really a good deal to me. So we need students to think more physically, we need problems off, we need to think outside the box. And we want to put our teachers, our pre-service teachers, proud students. Back in the box for testing is not totally anything that's accountable. And that is determining what we need to be accountable to, and that's the difference.
Thank you. Are there any questions for other members of the panel? I see none, thank you very much. Class Abner, or Kylie Abner, and the next person after that is Hannah Gole.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. My name is Haley Abner. Of course, I'm here for the first time in Massachusetts. My name is Haley Abner. As a recent high school graduate of Brooklyn High, I would like to advocate for H497, to eliminate these state standardized tests for high school diploma. I passed the NCAS, I was not commissioned, but I do not think it is representative of everything I have learned in high school. I do not think it is fair to students who do not have the ability and upbringing that I do. And it is certainly not, and it certainly steps into a roadblock for it to be a high school diploma, again, to graduate. My name is, I honors in sophomore year. I have a school district, and I also have a visiting school district for life, and all come from a very educated family. And we still have a weak NCAS preparation. So I wonder how some studies have been founded, it's a two-day preparation, because if a upper-income, upper, highly educated school district wants to be prepared for kids to know how to take the test, I wonder how that works with English and Chinese. So that was me getting into spending the weekend. And it's not false, and no matter what, no high school test, or other education, or any other, it may not actually happen to be ultimately a winner in the end, but it will preserve a high school diploma. And it is not fair for other students with special needs. So I would like to advocate that we eliminate any pre-school test because no test will be counter all, and all factors on why education fails. And until we have a test that either defends that, or we still take a test, it is not fair to have that, you know, to get a diploma.
Any questions for the committee? Thank you very much. Hannah Gole?
Sure. This is my first time, I've always first time with the chair. This is kind of my, I have a senior person. I'm simply a customer of Boston, Massachusetts. And I am opposed to card testing and common core testing. And I'm going to tell you a story of my grandson, Lee Cosier, who's currently a sixth grade student, just about to finish. Lee has been a model student throughout his entire educational career, which began when he was three, and is now twelve. In the fifth grade, Lee was given the Presidential Award for Outstanding Academic Achievement in the town of Sawas, Massachusetts. Lee never had us a straight A, no. Lee was a child thirsty for knowledge, a child who wanted to have as much math given to him as he possibly could. In the fifth grade, he took me up CAS exam, the previous year we were taking the card. But he took me up CAS exam, and he got one problem wrong, actually, it was a portion of the problem. He was very disappointed. He wanted to know exactly what his problem was, he got, oh, what did he do wrong? Probably transferred a number, or maybe his writing wasn't terribly logical. But he was very disturbed about it. He had math class once a day. When he went to sixth grade, middle school, the school rating had dropped to level two, level three. And I wasn't terribly concerned about it at that point, until I realized he was taking math twice a day. Two or four minutes per days of math class every single day. So that was a trimester. They need to boost his math scores because the child had a theory as well in math. As they have in the middle school level, as they have in the elementary school level. So now he takes his score, he only gets a portion of the problem wrong on the NCAS test, math class down in this school, gets a presidential award, and we've put him in a punishing environment. Two math classes a day. Not that that's punishment, except he's only learned two things all year in these two math classes. The school he attends is on trimesters. In the first trimester, it was two math classes. After Thanksgiving, we went into the third trimester, the second trimester, where a third math class was there. Not every day, just every other day. And what were they going to be teaching? They were teaching them to take an MCAS exam, to boost the school's scores, period. That was the sole purpose of that class. So here's a kid who wants to learn new math, takes it twice a day, then there's a third class, and he's not learning any new math. We are taking away time from children's education to brainwash them to taking these exams and succeeding so that we can rate schools, so that communities appear better to other people. We're using high-stakes achievement testing to manipulate the population. This does not prove to anybody this high-stakes test. What kind of student my grandson is, what kind of an adult he's going to be, what his specialty will be as he goes forward in the future. He's on a stem track. He's already been pigeonholed. He was pigeonholed in the fifth grade. But I don't think he's going to be a science, a scientist. I don't think he's going to be a mathematician. I think he is going to be a pediatrician. We perhaps will know in a few more years, if we can get rid of some of this testing and actually give our kids a chance to learn, to be creative, to study music, art, and other aspects that enhance education. Let's just get rid of high-stakes testing, please.
Thank you. Any questions, members? That completes the list of people who have signed up to testify in H497. So many people have signed up to testify, who have not yet been before. We've got a couple of bills in between, two people, two of those. H450, and also the National Technology Committee. That is, we have a big. Donna Vaughn, Donna Vaughn, she wants to talk to the listener. Ray, anything for the audience? Ray, anything for the audience?
Can everybody hear me? Good afternoon. My name is Amy Swor. I'm a youth organizer for the Boston Area Development Association. We own a coalition with a few organizations that are in our direction, and also about their testing. And I'm here to support the proposals that will initiate a moratorium on standardized testing. So I attend Boston day and evening right now. It's an alternative high school in Roxbury. I've attended the Boston Great Academy, which is located in South Boston, which is moving this year to Brighton. I'm also at the now, I used to be initiated now, closing Dorchester Academy. So as you, as you already know, I know Boston law better than the majority of people we have played with. And I go through this as well, just the majority of people like to talk about, but don't actually go through. So I've taken the part of that, and to be honest with you, I don't feel as if it measures my intelligence or my stamina or anything else. To be honest with you, I fail it. And I don't think that reflects my intelligence, it does not reflect my integrity, it does not reflect my school system. I believe that sending kids into the basement of their school, telling them that they can't have their phones around them, being treated as if they were test subjects isn't very fun. Having your student ID number posted on the wall of your classroom with your test scores and your grade scores is dehumanizing. It's disrespectful. And more importantly, it's intimidating, and I don't understand the purpose for it whatsoever. However, that means that the coalition that I worked with, again, the youth organization, the now generation, has came up with some demands, five demands, which would be, first one is, city and state officials take the part test publicly, since they're so in favor for it. I'd like to see them actually do it. Because if they have the common sense to educate for this test, then let's see them do it. No test, no call, just in the same conditions that we were putting through. In a room that was publicly broadcast on the site, so we could see what they're doing, what they're up to, so they were cheap. Another thing would be, high-stakes testing, there's no over graduation requirement, once again. I mean, I'm not the best student, I'm not here to say that I am, but test scores don't really measure my intelligence and who I am as a person, let alone what I've learned in that school, or what the curriculum is teaching. We'd also want to take high-stakes testing not tied to the school ranking or process. I haven't yet graduated from Dorchester Academy. Dorchester Academy is one of the last neighborhood schools. And I've heard about Dorchester Academy through friends, friends of my family, my family for years. And over, over the years, it's been neglected because of low test scores and various other funding reasons. Also, we'd like to have high-stakes testing not tied to a teacher evaluation because it clearly does not reflect how well a teacher delivers their curriculum because their curriculum does not reflect the test that's made by a federal group of test makers. Also, the last one would be, high-stakes testing only used to assess one time in elementary school, middle school, and high school, as opposed to every year or every other year. I see it's very unfair to have a school over this. I feel like it's unfair to initiate tests just to make sure that we can graduate or not because clearly, all that time that's taken out of because clearly, all that time that's taken out of our curriculum and our time to learn actual important things in the class is taken up for tests, for test, uh, classes. There's no gift cards, uh, maybe two points for a gift. Okay, now, so publicly, I have a question for all of you. Would you all be willing to take the part, or the M CAS publicly, if we arranged a place and provided food? Real quick, I'd like to announce, uh, I would like to, uh, even though they left, I'd like to, uh, make a remark to the young Democrats. That giving up a high school student who has an elementary school level is a reform on education, isn't a flex for education, especially public education. I haven't seen any of those three things in Boston public schools, ever in my life, and I've been here majority of my life. Also, we don't need testing to make work, uh, we need work-related quizzes that are based off of the curriculum given by our teachers. I don't see the purpose in these federal-based standardized tests.
Thank you very much, appreciate the patience and the contribution there. Any questions for the panel? Say none, thank you. Now, I'm looking to be the chairman, three, seven, zero. Deborah Brennan? Deborah Brennan? Joyce? I'm sorry, I can't hear the last name. Joyce from Bedford here. Betsy, Natalie, U S N R. We're now looking at four, five, one. Ladies alone. Julie, I'm sorry, I was announcing her name. Now, we're looking at four, five, one. Uh, Laura? And we check the level. Good morning.
What do you have on your mind? Back to me, members of the New York, uh, show, my friend. A college professor that will fix the new promise and taught philosophy and ethics for twenty-five years. I have significant experience teaching in that is both in Massachusetts and Oregon. Uh, I'm here to ask you to put a moratorium on, on, on part, and on the board. In the last two or three years, but especially in this past one, that detected a misdefined inability of students that tend to read each other's writing in performing tasks normally expected from their earlier peers. The new cohorts have unusual difficulties in reading complex tests, even short ones, which translates into difficulties in summarizing and comparing contexts in my case. And this is the ability to write in research papers. The completion of assignments shows a decline in terms of readiness to professional tool. The ability to understand each sentence and perceive beyond the context, even when prior, is now reduced or at least delayed. This shows everything now, and brings down the overall level of what can be accomplished from where it used to be with the early childhood halls. I have spoken with many of Latin, Latin professors, and, oh, English, psychology, government, history, and their assessments are very similar to mine. There are concerns that this leadership hasn't heard recently, and that students will have the vocabulary skills to recognize activities and perceive meaningful discussions of the ideas that need to be taught in those disciplines. Many of those instructors find that they have to explain content in which is contextual and historical, and that schools, with which students should be familiar. Um, I have also talked with, um, a lot of colleagues in accounting, economics, and career connected to this staff. And all those professors and instructors are concerned with a rapid slide, recent but rapid. It is more wonder that the so-called legal non-credit bearing courses in modern colleges have increased expectations. Now, is the state of affairs one of the remedy, or remedy by one of four, or break the law of law of law structure? Maybe not. Or is it not, the state of affairs is investigated, or even caused by the introduction of part, the high stakes test, Jewish teachers, um, Jewish teachers, and authorities? Um, now, since the only difference with Massachusetts was in fact, in special part, it seems very likely that that's the deal. I have two main recommendations. One would be to, in fact, eat the, the school districts that have difficulty eating in the fourth aid part. But the, the, the other one is really for me to be concerned with who wrote the College of Art Center. These are non-experts in the field of education. They have not taught, uh, in, um, K two, and they're really not real experts. We can ask this, we will hear this, from Stanislawski, and Professor, um, Milber from Stanford University.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the professor? Say none, thank you very much. Uh, which, uh, last question, uh, you can say a lot of time, a lot of, have you, have you?
Thank you very much, Chairman White, and the Committee, Joint Committee on Education. I'm Jonathan Rappaport, Executive Director of White's Learning, and I'm testifying in support of various bills submitted seeking a moratorium on high stakes testing in Massachusetts. I come to you as a thirty-eight-year public school veteran, both as a teacher and administrator. I also was on a panel that wrote the Massachusetts Arts Program Framework, and I strongly support rigorous standards. However, I believe that MCAS and NAAP part has had a significant deleterious effect on arts education in, for many students in the state. A national two thousand and seven study of the Center on Education Policy reported that since two thousand and one, forty-four percent of school districts across the country have reduced the time spent on science, social studies, and the arts by an average of one hundred and twenty-five minutes per week in order to focus on reading and math. As the arts coordinator in the Western Public Schools, I observed this firsthand. One middle school in particular eliminated all music and art students with low academic achievements. These students had double math and or double E L A periods. School became a joyless place, with nothing to look for to day in and day out, it was mere drudgery. Ironically, on the other side of the city, however, students at the Western Arts Magnet School have less reading, less math, and they have fifty minutes daily of arts. Their academic achievement was sorry. To this day, the Western Arts Magnet School is rated as a lowly run school. Other amazing urban success stories across Massachusetts include the Pepeity School in Cambridge, the Archibald School in Boston, the Evans Middle School in Boston. All these schools have several commonalities, increased arts, often resulting in less time for reading and math, yet higher academic achievement across all sectors. Meanwhile, America's facing a creativity crisis as standardized testing and growth-oriented, dumbed-down curriculum jeopardizes the times and the outlook of the future. A two thousand and ten College William and Mary Study found Americans' scores on the Torrance Test of Creative Thinking has been dropping steadily since nineteen ninety. In a national survey of business leaders across the country, creativity and out-of-the-box thinking are most of the top skills desired by employers. We know that standardized tests measure only a small portion of what makes education meaningful. According to late education researcher Gerald Bracy, qualities that standardized tests cannot measure, and is a homeless amount twenty or thirty items, including many traits that are fostered by sequential arts education. Isn't it time that we stop? It's taken work, and truly analyze what we're doing for our children, our teachers, and our schools. I urge you to support a high stakes testing moratorium in Massachusetts. Thank you. How can you give me a little? Thank you. And thank you for your, uh, speaking, and your patience.
Good afternoon, Senator Abner, many is a little bit of the year began. Um, I'm in Smithville, that's where I'm doing great highs, going at, and some support and, uh, bill. And education is the most important test we may provide, actually raising the confidence that any of both can succeed in increasingly competitive global environment, also to make improvements about our frequently assumed leadership roles. Education is our front line. Assessment systems are critically important components of education, and when used effectively, are used, are tools used to better content mastery and skill attainment. Problem today, though, is that education, what we teach and how we teach, is in a state of transition from a system built centuries ago to serve a very intact action society, to one that needs to see to serve a much more dynamic, information-based society. That transition was certainly influenced by a variety of disassociated interested parties contributing to the basically distant battle sense that were overwhelmed and experienced by every school in our state. Most of the language proposed in H four five six, which would establish a fast work to review administrative mandate and rules, regulations, and reporting requirements for the relevancy to effective teaching learning, would first be to determine our true purpose of education, both with precedent and future, before deciding on how best to assess due progress. Like anything that requires retool and renovation or transformation, we need to start that process by establishing a common foundation, that foundation, expectations. The evidence is clear, it's demonstrated by the increasing need for remediation courses for college freshmen and high-level underemployed, unemployed college graduates. There exists a disconnect between K to twelve, higher education, and workforce regarding content and skills and expectations. We need to close that gap by engaging applicant operations of K to twelve, higher education, and workforce experts with policy makers to conduct a zero-based review of content and skills we expect our students to master at different stages of their education, and then determine whether or not we can afford to beat those expectations effectively and throughout our state. Problem sounds daunting, it is not. All we need to do is enlarge our resources, we can do it already. Learn, adapt, persevere, and simplify with focused purpose. What we face are man-made problems, a thousand problems. Fortunately, we depart in the uniquely advantageous conditions to succeed where in Boston, education is half of the world. Where their profession is to lead and they can change, we need to make first perhaps, you can say, then the door. I have heard from that.
We have not, we have not regarded. So is there anyone else who's signed up for real, other than three hundred and one?
Yes.
Is there anyone else that you can get a sense of, of the people that are around you? So we've seen one, so it's, uh, I'm also.
Thank you. I'm Senator Blaskis, I'm the president of the Educational Association of Institute, which is about just three K to twelve, and K local in Massachusetts. Nearly three thousand members, educators. Um, I'm getting, I'm just pointing, when I discovered this core team at age three four, and I don't expect them to have any sort of two people, because I know a lot of people have talked about that. And what I want to say about that is that.